Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont Committee, the whole meeting for March 31st, 2011. I'd like to begin by having our clerk please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerk's here, trustee Emery.
Here.
And her trustee companion, what's his last name?
Lance.
Stanley. Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Forsley.
Here.
Trustee Klebenow.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther.
Here.
Assistant Economic Development Director and Village Planner Malik.
Here.
And Acting Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Thank you. Please join us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda for the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting held March 17th and board meeting held March 21st, 2011. Any corrections to be reported, clerk, at this time?
There was a correction on the committee of the whole meeting. We just needed to take out the mayor pro temp, Scott, because you were here, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Moving right along, open forum. We have one open forum request this evening, and that's from Rich Jones at 111 East Des Moines regarding the Westmont Historical Society's 90th Anniversary Celebration. Rich?
Sorry?
You're up.
I'm from the Westmont Historical Society, and we have a request in honor of Westmont's 90th Anniversary, which is this year. We would like to have a portion of Cass Avenue from Dallas Street to Richmond Street renamed honorary Greg's Road. It was called Greg's Road back in the late 1800s when Mr. Greg had his brick manufacturing company here, and his house, which is now our museum, was at that time located on what is now called Cass Avenue. What we're asking is just one of those brown and white honorary signs, just like we have for Muddy Waters on the corner of Quincy and Cass, and we'd like to have it installed on Richmond and Cass if possible. I don't know if there's a sign there we could put it on. Otherwise, Dallas would be fine. What we want to do is, those of you who have been past the museum in the past few months, you may have noticed we have a new sign out there that designates the place as Greg, William Greg's Museum. Sorry, I'm a senior moment. William Greg's Museum. We want to dedicate that sign on June 12th. What we plan on doing, have the ice cream social, weather permitting, we're going to have some Model T Fords, and if we can work it out, we'd like to give some rides to the public. But we would like to dedicate the street sign at the same time if you let us have it. That's it. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from board members?
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
There's a, there is no sign other than the one up on the stoplight.
Right. That's what I just.
So we have to, so they would have to install an additional sign on the corner of Richmond and Cass.
If that's not feasible, there is a sign down on Dallas. The only reason we'd like to put it on Richmond and Cass, it's the closest intersection where the house originally was. It's actually the closest intersection to the museum, so it could possibly draw some attention. It's just, there's so few people in this town, actually, we have a museum.
Yeah.
We have, I think, we have 25, 30,000 people in town. We have 50 members. So it's one way of drawing some attention to the museum.
Could we have our Public Works Director, Steve May, be in contact with you to find out the best way to go about doing that?
All right. Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions from board members regarding this request?
I think it might be difficult on that corner. I think a pole would get in the way. That's, the post would get in the way. That's why I think they have to sign up on the light.
Right.
So it'd be a shame. If they could figure out a way of putting it there, it'd be great, but if not, we'll figure something out.
Well, I'd say, Pat, to let Steve May take a look at it.
I believe the Street Department made the other sign, didn't they? For the Muddy Waters sign, did the Street Department make that sign?
Yeah, they do the honorary signs.
Can we put that on the next agenda?
For Committee of the Whole or for Monday for voting?
Well, can we do it for Monday? I don't think we need a discussion on it, do we?
Isn't there, didn't we decide a new process?
We have a process. And I guess I would prefer to probably bring it through that process. I think, it sounds like we have enough time to do it, given the date. So we'll be in touch with you and we'll get that going.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rich. Moving right along our reports. First thing I would like to bring up this evening is in regards to number, item number eight on our agenda. We received this request from the Westmont Park District this afternoon, and it reads as follows. "The Westmont Park District is requesting to postpone item number eight on our agenda, the annexation and rezoning of the S-curve property by Cass Avenue, Cass Court, and 35th Street. Request to postpone it until August 11th, 2011. Committee of the Whole meeting. The reason for the request is the Park District needs additional time to review the possibility of previously unrecognized deed restrictions and issues related to Oakbrook's disconnection of the S-curve property." So that's the request from the Park District. However, we have Village President John Craig from Oakbrook here this evening, and we also have the Oakbrook Village Manager, Dave Niemeyer, here this evening. So when this item, and also, I believe, there's a number of people in the public that would be interested in making comments on this request. We do request, when we reach this item on our agenda, that we do not exceed three minutes to present your thoughts and ideas on that particular request.
And Mayor, if I can chime in on that, it is published for a public hearing on the annexation agreement. The Park District would like a continuance of that, so the public hearing will be formally continued until August 11th. So we're not going to swear in any witnesses who want to speak tonight under oath. As the mayor said, there'll be a three-minute time limit, and that public hearing will commence on August 11th, again, without the need for further newspaper publication, but the agenda with the public hearing item will get posted again.
Why wouldn't we just postpone this off of the agenda and then bring it back on the 11th and have the public hearing then? Why would we go through that tonight and then come back August 11th, which I'm sure everybody's going to come back again? Why wouldn't we just postpone this item until August 11th?
The only thought I have is that these people have taken the time out of their evening to come over here, and Mr. Niemeyer, the village manager, would like to make, he's here specifically to make some comments on this item. That's why I'm requesting it. If that's what the board's desire is, fine, but I would like to hear from those people this evening, if at all possible.
Well, the only question that I have is, I mean, from what I understand in reading, if there's some problems from a legal standpoint, I mean, why would we even want to bring this up at this point in time?
Well, I don't think it's expected that the board necessarily should issue any public comments at this time, but simply hear what the representatives have to say and take it under advisement.
Any other comments from board members?
I was just curious if you wanted to move it further up on the agenda?
We could.
So they don't have to sit through all of these other agenda items?
We could ring it up and discuss it, discuss it right now, if that's the.
That way, we don't take up a lot of their time.
Okay. With that being said, Manager Niemeyer, would you like to come forth with your comments?
Thank you for allowing me this time, and I'm aware we have similar timetables in our board meetings, so I'll try to be brief. My name is Dave Niemeyer. I'm the village manager with the Village of Oakbrook. As you mentioned, President Craig is also in the audience, trustee Jerry Wolin and a few of our residents. Here tonight to represent the Village of Oakbrook, our two communities have had a long history of working together. Fire departments have automatic aid where we respond to each other's calls. Our police departments assist each other with various missing persons, accident, traffic control, and general backup situations. Last year, as you know, the Westmont Park District did approach us about de-annexing about three-quarters acres of property that they owned that happened to be located in our village. We received an email from the Park District last June saying that the Park District was simply interested in keeping the property in Westmont and defining the boundaries as was intended several years ago. And really, in the spirit of that intergovernmental cooperation that we've had with Westmont, our village board did agree to de-annex this property last September. However, about a month or so ago, we learned that the Park District was looking to rezone this property to R4 zoning. Upon learning this, your staff was kind enough to meet with myself and also invite the Park District members, and at that meeting, we learned that the Park District was seeking this rezoning in order to increase the value of the site so it could be sold to a developer and then the proceeds used for a future park site somewhere in Westmont, and that these discussions had been underway since, at least as far as early 2009. I think, you know, the message we wanted to convey to you tonight is really just, one is that I think we were concerned with the way the Park District had handled this issue. It appears to us that last year, they withheld the fact that they had planned to ask for rezoning this property once we de-annexed the three-quarters of acres, and they must have known we would not approve the de-annexation if we knew that they wanted to build townhomes on the site. As a result, last week, our board repealed the ordinance, de-annexing the property, and it is our position that the three-quarters acres is in the corporate bounties of the Village of Oakbrook. For those of you who are not familiar with the history of the three-quarter acre property and the adjacent 1.75 acres of open space, which is in Westmont, we've had a long history of both communities agreeing to keep this land as open space. Westmont received the land as part of the Oakbrook Hills Hotel Development, the 1.75 acres, and as part of an agreement with Oakbrook, the Butler's in DuPage County in the mid-1980s, Westmont assured Oakbrook that this land would become and remain a passive park. The land is shown as parkland in Westmont, wants comprehensive plan, and when the additional three-quarters acres of property was deeded by the Butler family to the Village of Westmont in 1987, there was actually a rider attached to the deed stating that the parcels had to be utilized by the village for passive park purposes, and it sounds like that's a little bit of what the Park District wants to look at. We just feel, you know, based on these past commitments, that this is not an appropriate use. Also, you're adding more traffic to an area that has site distance issues. There have been numerous accidents at the 35th Street and Cass Avenue Midwest Road Intersection, including a fatal accident and seven accidents in the last five years. The property is also not appropriate for development because of its odd size, lack of stormwater management, and is bound by roadways on three sides. So again, I appreciate your time and consideration this evening, and when this does return to the board, we would ask that you not approve this annexation and rezoning request from the Westmont Park District. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to, in your audience, that would like to speak on this item? Okay. Please come forward and give us your name, address, and.
My name is Jerry Wolin. I'm a village trustee in Oakbrook, and I agree with everything that our village manager said, and I won't repeat any of it. As a trustee, I voted on the agreement to de-annex the land back in September, but it was our understanding that it was going to be kept as open space. I never would have voted for it had I thought otherwise, and based on the historical documents, that's what it should be, and we look forward to working together with the Village of Westmont, the Park District, and reaching agreement over the next couple of months. And I just like to add, I've had the pleasure of working with Westmont previously, meeting with the police chief and the fire chief, and working on ways of cooperating. We have a great working relationship, and it's a plus for both of us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I have my form to speak and then a quick handout for you.
Thank you.
You can read it in your leisure room.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, and before I quickly go through my handout that I gave to you, I'd like to thank you for your time and thoughts and appreciate your efforts and consideration in this matter. In reference to the handout that I gave you, pages three through five are photos of the property, if you're not familiar with what it looks like, the retaining wall that's there, the shape of the property, the water retention that's on it, et cetera, and also from the aerial, you'll get a view of, if you're making a left-hand turn out of the hotel, that it would probably be advantageous to see the oncoming traffic that you're about to hit, if you can ever come out of that hotel, and see what that intersection is like. You ought to drive the intersection to realize why it needs to be open space. Pages six to seven are documents talking about site distances and how it's important to see that. These documents are from the back in the early 80s before the intersection was reconfigured. Pages eight through 10 are a 1982 memo that goes through the documentation of how it should be an open space or a park. It's coming from the Village of Westmont. Page 11 shows the Westmont zoning map. Page 11 shows the Park District map and what it's designated as and why it's designated such. Pages 13, 14 are FOIA requests that also talk about it being open space and the history of it being open space and why it needs to be that way. And lastly, I just hope you go through, and if you're looking at rezoning the property, I'm not into the annexation side of it, but just the rezoning of it from R1 or R2 to R4, is to look at the rationale of why you rezone a property, and through the documents that I've given to you, I think you'll concur of that it really shouldn't be rezoned, meaning you can't rezone a property and make it more saleable. You cannot rezone a property just to make more money for a sister agency, which is the actual quoted documents and quotes from the Zoning and Planning Commission. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
That will save time. My name is Earl Swallow. I'm the president of the Condominium Association at the Royal Hills Club at 3525 Cass Court. So I am not speaking for the Village of Oakbrook or anything from Oakbrook. We are residents of Westmont. Our condominium happens to have a mailing address that's in Oakbrook, but we are in fact located in Westmont. 63 units, about 100 residents who have made the choice to be Oakbrook, or I'm sorry, Westmont residents, who have, in many cases, looked at Oakbrook Club, Growaway Mill, Oakbrook Towers, and other choices of that kind, and chosen Westmont. And one of the things, and so one of my handouts is simply a synopsis about our association. The other is the front door that we maintain for entry into our association as part of Westmont. I had intended to have a third picture to show you the very attractive front door that Westmont has on Cass Avenue when you're coming south, and you see this nice park and the Westmont sign. Unfortunately, I didn't manage that today, but I think everyone here has driven down there and seen it. And so my appeal is that we need to maintain the front door of Westmont that that provides. Our residents do use that park and walk out there. Folks doing that would probably do so more, and folks from the walking path would do so if there were a couple benches out there. Not necessarily slides and merry-go-rounds, but at least a couple benches. So any contention that it is not used is, I think, at least partly connected to that. So our appeal and our concern is also, of course, one of property values. I think its development would certainly not enhance the property values of our condominiums with that front door immediately to the south. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
Thank you. There's only 14 more of us, so don't.
Thanks for allowing us to talk. This is an important decision for Westmont and for Oakbrook, much more so than a two-acre parcel of land would imply. Tonight, you're hearing from concerned citizens from both Oakbrook and Westmont about this proposed rezoning. The reasons for the concerns are pretty basic, actually, three. As mentioned before, since the 1980s, reconfiguration of Cass and 35th, there has been a understanding between Westmont and Oakbrook that that parcel in question would remain open. There are multiple documents between our communities that show historical information identifying these properties as basically open. Back then, when they did this, an intergovernmental agreement would have been beneficial, but I guess the two communities trusted one another, and your verbal words were as good as your pen. The second item is the intersection of Cass and 35th. If you're familiar with it, with the hotel, is already dangerous, according to the DuPage County Highway Authority. It is below minimum standards today, even with a full line of sight open. Putting buildings up on that will make it a more dangerous intersection, and I don't think any of us who know that there was a death there and several injuries want to have it on our conscience that we add it to the potential likelihood of more accidents. And the last item is the Westmont bylaws, and your town has grown up in the last 20 years, as I've looked at it, but your bylaws do indicate that rezoning should not result in adverse property impacts. Obviously, an action to rezone this parcel, which is primarily surrounded by homes, will have an adverse impact. We hope that your bylaws are also applicable to your neighboring communities like Oakbrook and also to the folks from the condominium who are in Westmont. So as I mentioned, the decision that you will be facing in August, and we'll probably all be back here again, is very important to us and much more so than two acres would imply, and we would just ask that somehow our two communities figure out a way to work together so that we can achieve our mutual purposes. Thank you.
I'm sorry, sir. What was your name?
Alan Hanslick.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. We appreciate all of you coming in this evening and to present to us your concerns about that particular property in the Village of Westmont. Thank you very much. Now, on a little lighter note this evening, I would just like to say that I was asked to be a judge chili eating contest by troop number 55, which is made up of young men from both Westmont and Downers Grove. And Karen Gatewood, who's a resident of Westmont, is the secretary for troop 55, and she was also the chili coordinator. So I've never done anything like this before, but it was indeed a lot of, a lot of fun. There were 22 different kinds of chili that I had the pleasure of tasting that evening and judging, and there were, there were six of us judges. So afterwards, they sent a picture of all the judges after the judging had been completed, and we're all sitting at a big table, enjoying a nice piece of white cake with lots of frosting to kind of cool down our mouths after all of the chili tasting. So anyhow, I just want to thank Karen Gatewood and troop 55 boys for inviting me to their chili, chili tasting contest, which they do have every year. Thank you. And the last thing I would like to request is an executive session regarding personnel and potential litigation. Thank you. Moving right along, our village clerk.
I just want to remind everybody that early voting ended today, and then I'm going to get on my bandbox. You know, we have countries fighting all over the world for the, for the experience of getting to vote in a democratic society, and as residents, you all have that right, and you should exercise it. And I firmly believe if you don't take the time to vote, don't call us and complain. You have the right to go out and make your choices on election day, and you should do it. And that's my preach for tonight.
Anything further?
That's it.
Thank you. Moving right along, our village attorney, John Zemanek.
Applause to the clerk and nothing else to add.
Village manager, Ron Searle.
Thank you. Just a couple of things I wanted to draw attention to, the supplemental purchase order list that we passed out. The one purchase order listed on there, number 11025705, is not a new purchase order, but I wanted to draw attention that it also simultaneously appears on the finance ordinance. Next, I wanted to mention that this week, we had a staff member at a workshop. As the board knows, the president declared the area a disaster as a result of the significant snowstorm we had at the beginning of February, and they had a workshop to explain the public assistance program that we were eligible to apply for reimbursement for certain expenses that we had. One of the things that we need to do is approve a public assistance grant agreement, and I would ask permission to put that on the agenda for Monday night so that we could get that process going forward. Then the last thing I had was to ask our police chief to come to the podium. I think he wanted to address the board regarding something involving the Illinois Chiefs of Police Association.
Thank you, Mayor Searle. Last night, I had the distinct honor of being in Springfield to attend a reception hosted by the Illinois Chiefs of Police Association, and they had selected our state representative, Patty Bella, to receive the Illinois Chiefs of Police Association Legislator of the Year Award, and she was so honored last night. And in speaking to Patty, she had a very busy night last night. She mentioned that she was downstairs receiving an award from another organization, came upstairs to receive an award from the Illinois Chiefs, and then had to go, and she had a committee meeting she had to get to. And to see her in action was very, very impressive, but there'll be a press release coming with some photos as well, but I just wanted to recognize her and her efforts for being selected as the Illinois Chiefs Legislator of the Year, and she was most deserving of that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your short presentation, chief. Any questions? Anything further?
That's all I have.
Trustee items. I start with trustee Forsley.
Just a couple of things. Had the opportunity to do the Lux Kitchen last night in design, and they had the ribbon cutting, which was very nice, a new shop in town, so if you can get down there, 222, I get the address right, I think, North Cass, and a couple of the trustees were there. And then also, again, I stopped by Novel Experience, and we're trying to keep promoting our businesses, and if you get in, I know the summer is going to bring a lot more people to downtown with, we got The Taste, and we got Cruisin' Nights, and we got Relay, and we got so many activities coming up tonight that the downtown should be booming, and hopefully you can stop by these businesses and see what they have. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming.
Just a couple of things real quick. First of all, we have a public works meeting Monday evening here at Village Hall at 6:00. And then the second thing I need to get into is, everyone knows, we've been talking about the recycling and waste program coming up, and there are some people, I think, that still are kind of, kind of questioning what we're doing here. I want everyone to understand, nothing is going to change in your actual home waste removal. It's going to stay the same. You'll have your weekly pickup, you'll allow your two cans, just like you have been in years past. What we're doing is, we're making a change so you can recycle more items to cut down the amount of waste that you're throwing out. What you're seeing up on the screen right now is a sample of what you will be receiving from Waste Management on their behalf, on the behalf of the Village of Westmont, explaining to you how the new program is going to work. This will give you all the insights, so this is something that you do receive in the mail. Please take a look at it, because it's going to have everything laid out exactly how the new program works. new program works. What's going to happen is, first, each resident, each single-family resident in this town, be alleyside or streetside, will receive a ninety-six-gallon tote for recyclable goods. Now, that's going to give you a fair amount more capacity based on what you've had. I've seen everything from garbage cans marked recycling on it, I've seen the eighteen-gallon toters, and two and three and four of those, so hopefully, this is going to take care of having the multiple containers. Second is, with the larger container, it's going to be picked up every other week. Now, that's why this piece of literature that'll be coming in the mail will give you a better idea, because as everyone knows, well, maybe everyone doesn't know, the village is broken up into four quadrants for garbage pickup and recycle pickup. So that's something that you would want to make sure that you take a look at. So then, as far as people who have been taking the products and splitting them out in different containers, if you still want to do that, that's fine, but you don't have to do that anymore. The only thing I would suggest is maybe you rinse out the pop cans and some other things that you do throw away, because it makes it a little bit easier to process. Now, what's going to happen is, you can keep the old bins for your own personal use, do with whatever you want, or if you have more recyclables other than the large can, by all means, put it out. Week of April eighteenth is when Waste Management is going to be sending out this flyer for you to take a look at. The week of April twenty-fifth, Waste Management will start delivering the new ninety-six-gallon toters. Then the new program will begin on May first. So any questions that you have, please call. We are going to continue to put some of these items on the website, so you have the information. And by any means, anybody has any questions at all, feel free to contact either myself through the village, or if you like, you can contact me on my cell phone, that's 630-333-2534. Feel free to give me a call, and I'll explain it all to you. Any other questions? I will say that Larry McIntyre has been very resourceful and very helpful with this program, and I appreciate the help and work that he's put in. I know that he is wearing many hats at this point in time, but I'm sure that any questions that you may have, Larry would probably be able to answer some of the questions as well. So I hope everyone in Westmont welcomes the new program. I know it's a little bit different, changes are kind of difficult to get accustomed to, but we feel that you'll be able to recycle more product this way, and hopefully, it'll cut down on your regular waste, and I thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Klebinow.
Mayor, excuse me, just one second. I just want, for clarification for the viewing audience, what they see up there, or what they may have seen on the screen as far as a flyer, that's just for illustrative purposes. It's going to look similar to that, it's not in final form, so we didn't have a final version to present tonight, so I just wanted to clarify that.
So it's not going to say January third?
No, and it's not going to say City of Valley Center.
That's why I said sample.
Right. I just want to make sure.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, one thing I'd like to do is, I'd like to, your sister Gretchen has a birthday today, and I'd like to say happy birthday. I met her today, I was there, and it was very nice to meet her, and today's her birthday, so happy birthday, Gretchen. And I'd also, because April is starting tomorrow, in the paper, you saw it, and Steve's not here, but we do have our pickup, our brush pickup starts in April, so it's going to start April eleventh for the residents on the north side of the railroad tracks, and the week after, it will start on the south side of the tracks. So everybody, it's getting to that time, even though sometimes it won't feel like spring, it must be coming around the corner, because our brush pickup is getting ready to start. So thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Emery.
Thank you. With me tonight is, hanging onto my nameplate, is Flat Stanley. He comes to us from a young lady, the lovely and talented six-year-old Allison Kess Marsick, who happens to be related to me. She's in kindergarten at Redwood Elementary School in Avon Lake, Ohio, and Flat Stanley is touring Westmont for two weeks. He's having his picture taken all over town with various dignitaries and that type of thing. He's very scared about the new recycling program, however.
Afraid he's going to land in it?
So that's why he's with me tonight. That's all I have.
Waste Management is job trades in Ohio, too.
There's Flat Stanley.
Thank you. Trustee Scott.
Nothing this evening, sir. Thank you.
Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. I just wanted to let everyone know, there will not be an Economic Development Committee meeting on Wednesday, April sixth, and then I just wanted to give a belated congratulations to Deputy Chief Gunther on his graduation from the FBI Academy. Great job, and it's great to have you. We are just so pleased to have you back in town, and I think Tommy's probably even happier. So thank you. That's all I have.
I'm sure your physical condition is equal to or better than it was for our current police chief when he also returned from the FBI Academy.
Deputy Chief Gunther did swim thirty-two miles? Oh, sorry, thirty-four miles. He said he was ready to quit after two, but he stuck with it, so that was very good.
Congratulations for surviving and for all the knowledge, I'm sure, you learned in all the classes you attended. Thank you. Moving right along. New business. Development permit request, fifteen South Cass. Board to consider development permit request in the Downtown Business Development District for a new Mediterranean-themed restaurant at fifteen South Cass.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of the village board, we're pleased to have with us tonight Melanie Abic, who is the proprietor of a proposed restaurant for the property at fifteen South Cass, and in the past, I know we've had a little difficulty in getting sufficient information from our applicants in regard to downtown occupancies. However, I think the thirty-two-page executive summary and business plan that Ms. Abic has presented was more than adequate in answering a lot of the questions. So Melanie, did you have anything that you'd like to mention tonight with regard to your proposal?
I would like to mention, it's going to be not strictly Mediterranean cuisine, it's going to be American cuisine plus Mediterranean cuisine, so everybody don't get confused, because I like American cuisine also, and I think, I sent you a menu, right? Did you recommend it? And then we have menu, I think everybody got the menu also. If any question about the menu, I can describe it or, you know, make the definition. I would like to add my past, and my family run the business in, back home in Turkey. I came here eleven years ago to continue my education. I am a financial analyst, and also, I am an exchange stockbroker, but I got some issues, and I worked with the company as a manager eight years, continue. I got second maybe, and then now he is old enough to go to the daycare. I would like to open my business, and, you know, I would like to do whatever I want to do. This is how I am, who I am, and you're going to get me know better. If any question, I would like to, you know, answer it tonight.
Well, I notice your menu is unbelievable, very interested in trying out some things, and you also on here talked about you have your own salmon dressing to complement some of these things with.
Yeah, it's special dressing. It's like, you know, tartar sauce with the mayonnaise and honey mustard, it's, you know, the Mediterranean spice in there.
Not too spicy, though?
No. Medium. I mean, depends if, you know, we can ask the customer.
For the home viewers, I mean, you're talking from the corned beef sub, turkey ham cheese sub, honey roast turkey club, veggie sandwich, tuna sub, it goes on. Seafood burger, which is your mahi.
Mahi tuna, that's my favorite.
Yeah, I love mahi mahi, so I have a feeling I'm going to like that one. I mean, it's just eggplant, red bell pepper sandwiches, so it seems like you're really trying to complement various different diets, which I think is very good.
I would like to welcome to the vegetarian people, and this is not, all of them is home food, you know, I am going to prepare over there, not the frozen or before the prepare. So I am going to use the, I didn't add on the sheet, everything is going to be organic.
Yeah, there were a few things in, like you said, organic chicken soup, so everything is, you're going to try to stay as much organic as you can.
Yes.
So, sounds very interesting.
Sounds very good. You know, I would just like to say thank you, and especially, congratulations on your business plan. You are so well-prepared for tonight, this is just wonderful to see, and we really appreciate it.
Eight months, I'm looking for the best hot place. I'm living in Lagrange Park, I check Lagrange Park, Oakbrook, Westmont, and then the place, they rented to somebody else, but I called Chester and I convinced them. Now, he couldn't say no. I think it's going to be okay.
It's going to be great. It's going to be great.
When are you planning on opening? Do you have a date?
After the what? Yeah, April.
About April, okay. How are you going to use the drive-up window, or you don't know yet if you're going to use it?
I mean, I'm going to sell ice cream also, and I'm doing the homemade chocolate pro fair trio, and I think I'm going to say just like, you know, the walking window. That's it.
Okay.
I don't have that much dessert, you know.
And there will be seating inside, so you can either sit there, sit there or period out.
I think it's twenty, twenty-five people can sit, and also, they can take out, too.
What are your hours of operation going to be?
Hours? It's summertime, we're going to extend it at ten PM, opening nine AM, but in the beginning, I'm not going to prepare breakfast, maybe we're going to add breakfast, you know, another six months or so, just we're going to start with the lunch.
Good. That's good.
But wintertime, definitely eight.
Okay, seven days a week? Or are you going to take a day off?
No, I'm not going to day off.
No day off, oh. How many employees?
I would like to add something. My brother, he's living in Manchester, but he worked Morgan Cafe, it's very famous in London, and now he run the cafe, so he's coming, United States, to help me out also. So you're going to meet him, you know. He's going to help me out, I cannot run seven days.
Do you expect any major employees, like three people or four? How many?
We're going to start, two of us and plus three employees.
Okay.
On the floor.
Very good. Thank you.
Fred, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, Your Honor, except that the applicant appears to be very well-prepared, and we look forward to working with her at this location.
Okay. Very good.
Really much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation.
Can't wait to open.
Our agenda for consideration on Monday. Next item. Zoning and annexation requests. Six thousand one South Richmond. Board to consider requests from Yu Fang Yun for the following. One, annexation request to incorporate the subject lot into the Village of Westmont, and two, map amendment request to rezone from R1 Single Family Detached Residence District to R3 Single Family Detached Residence District.
Yeah. I'm Shi Feng Yeh, my house at six zero one South Richmond, Willow Brook. My house, north side and west side is Westmont, and why I apply for is I want to use the water service from Westmont, and Westmont already provide the water connection on my side and on my neighbors, and they contact my previous owner and neighbors if they want join Westmont and get water service. I'm the first one to apply for that one, and to join, to apply for joining Westmont, so I need to annexation to Westmont and get a rezone for my kind of lot.
Any questions?
John, what's the advantage for rezoning from R1 to R3?
Well, any annexation comes in automatically is R1, and so, from the owner's standpoint, the advantage is what's the highest and best zoning that allows for the highest and best use. I forget the lot dimensions, but I know staff analyzed it, looked at the surrounding uses, decided that R3 was most appropriate based on the lot size and surrounding uses, and other than that, I don't know what the advantages or disadvantages are, except that if it's owned R1 and does not conform with all of the lot size requirements, which are quite large, it would be a non-conforming lot, therefore, any additions, accessory structures, et cetera, the owner could run into difficulty.
Okay, yeah, because I'm looking at the surroundings, and it goes everywhere, R1, R2, and R3, and R3 looks like it's really the smallest lots, but I just thought it...
Yeah, R1 requests one hundred feet on west, and R3 only request sixty feet, so that's why they changed my zoning to R1 to R3.
What are the dimensions of a lot?
Oh, this is, three hundred ten feet is long, deep, and eighty-two, that's seventy-five wets.
That's eighty-one point three feet wide. The minimum lot width in the R1 district is a hundred feet, so it doesn't even qualify for that minimum lot width.
Okay.
That's the reason.
Staff input, please.
I was just going to add what John just said, that it didn't qualify as an R1 lot. Also, the adjacent properties are R3, there's some R1 nearby, but not immediately adjacent to this particular lot.
And this lot could not subdivide, given the eighty-one feet, it would be too much of a substandard lot in the R3 district.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming in, sir. Next item, Relay for Life, two thousand and eleven. Board to consider two requests pertaining to two thousand and eleven Relay for Life event, held at Ty Warner Park on May twentieth and May twenty-first. A, issuance of a sound amplification license, and B, permission to erect temporary direct signage on public property.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me come up here this evening. First of all, I want to say, as a twenty-plus-year resident of Westmont, the snow removal in Westmont, if I exceed any of the surrounding areas, I just want to say thank you to everyone. And I won't say exactly where I live, but I live right on the edge of another town, and when I drive to work and I go through that other town, the difference is remarkable, so, thank you. But I work for the American Cancer Society, I coordinate five of the twenty-one Relay for Life events here in DuPage County, one of them is Westmont, and I live here, so it's really fun for me to do that as a resident, and this is the third year that we'll be doing Relay for Life. Relay for Life is the signature fundraising activity for the American Cancer Society. Next to the federal government, we're the largest funder of cancer research, and Relay for Life happens in twenty-one communities in DuPage County, five thousand across the United States, and in twenty countries around the world, so it's a huge thing, and so we're proud that Westmont's part of that. The signature of Relay for Life is that it is an overnight event, the idea being that cancer never sleeps, so we are going to stay up all night and fight cancer, and it was started in nineteen eighty-five by Dr. Gordy Klatt, who wanted to do something to fight cancer, so he ran around a track for twenty-four hours by himself, and the next year, his friends decided to help him out and do a relay-type of idea, and so that's how the whole relay idea, twenty-four-hour idea, got started. But now it is a community festival, so it's not a race, people who can't run can feel free to come and join it. There's live music, entertainment, activities, games, and some very moving ceremonies where we honor cancer survivors and talk about how to fight back against cancer. This is the happy side of cancer, the survivors, the progress we're making, and it's all done because of the fundraising efforts of our volunteers. So the fact that this is an overnight event means that we would ask some permission to waive the no-sound-after-eleven PM law that we have. We have a professional DJ that works with us, and he has assured us that what he can do is monitor his sound, so that we will not have any live bands after, in fact, we won't have any live bands after nine PM, because we have a luminaria ceremony where we light luminaria bags around... luminaria bags around the track and honor people that we've lost to cancer or people still battling. And that's, brings the, the sound down almost entirely. We have a Native American flute music group that plays very softly during that ceremony. And then after that, we bring the, the level back up again and talk about how we're gonna fight back against cancer. But at that point, we will not have any more live bands. It'll be just the DJ playing music. And he's assured us that he can go to the perimeter of the event. It'll be at Ty Warner Park, um, hopefully, because last year it rained and we had to be inside. But if it's at Ty Warner Park, we'll be on, he will go to the perimeter of the property, and he'll adjust his sound to make sure that the residents can hear, the participants can hear it, but that it doesn't go beyond that, um, and we'll try to be as considerate as possible. We also routinely send out a good neighbor letter, so we hand-deliver those door-to-door to the neighborhoods closest to the park. And we tell them that Relay's coming up, we tell them the date, we invite them to come and join us, and if they choose not to join us, that they please indulge the one evening where people are trying to raise funds and awareness to fight cancer, so that, uh, a little bit of sound, just like other community festivals, people tolerate a little bit of noise, uh, in odd hours. Um, so if we could ask permission to have some sound after eleven PM, that would be grateful. Any questions? Um, and signage, uh, the other issue with signage, we have very low signs. The top of the sign is probably about up to here, maybe three feet or so. Kind of like a real estate sign, only even lower than a real estate sign. And we have very thin little metal, like an H stand, um, and, so the sign is probably about like that and like that, and it, and it points with an arrow to where the relay is. So we'd, we'd want to put that on Cass and, um, on Ogden Avenue to point people toward Ty Warner Park. Uh, it doesn't interfere with traffic. We do that at all the relays in every town, so we make sure that it doesn't interfere with any other traffic signs or road signs, and it doesn't, uh, impede any vision for the drivers. It just is a way for them to see a sign and know which direction to go to if they don't already know where the park is.
Questions?
On the signs, I've just put in the ordinance that the signs shall not obscure line of sight at the intersections, and that they shall be removed twenty-four hours after the event, if that is acceptable.
Oh, even before that, yeah. We're, we have volunteers that pluck them up, uh, probably, they go out there two, three in the morning and get, get, pick up the signs, 'cause everybody that is there is, is there. So, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think there was an issue in the staff right up about the eleven o'clock PM cutoff versus the having sound go toward till six in the morning. I guess I need some direction for the ordinance on that.
I have no problems with that.
Good morning.
I'm okay.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Did it last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Wesley. Thank you for being a resident of the Village of Westmont.
Uh, I love it, it's great.
Next item, Arts in the Park, two thousand and eleven. Board to consider issuance of a license for amplified sound during summer art series consisting of live music, movie screenings, and live theater performances.
Hello, I'm here to, my name's Larry McIntern. I'm here to promote the Arts in the Park, uh, entertainment series. Uh, we've been doing concerts in the park for many years, and that has always been on a Wednesday evening. Uh, but this year, working with the park district, we decided to try Friday nights. The thought is that we'll get more people to come out on Friday nights. They'll be able to stay later, since the next day, hopefully, a lot more people aren't going to work. On Wednesday evenings, when we used to have it on Wednesdays, what would happen is people might show up for the beginning of the concert, but after an hour, they would leave prior to the end of the concert, and I think it was mainly just because they maybe had to get to work the next day. But we're hoping Friday night will result in bigger turnouts, and that also coincides with the Friday night schedules for their movie nights, as well as, at the end of the year, uh, the Progressive Village Performance Network on August twelfth and thirteenth, which is a Friday and Saturday, uh, will be doing their Theater in the Park performance. So there's the schedule. Uh, it starts in June. Um, it is not every Friday. It's, it's approximately, it's, uh, three Fridays of each month. So anyway, June tenth, Pamela Rose and Wendy City Country, and that is a country band, and they are incredible. Uh, June seventeenth, The Deep Grooves, that's a Motown dance and soul band. June twenty-fourth is The Flat Cats, which is swing and pop standards. That's, uh, John Costle from Uncle John's Music. That's his band, and they're, uh, an annual favorite. July fifteenth, Taylor Street Jazz. Uh, the twenty-second is a movie night. Uh, the twenty-ninth of July is August, The Band, and that is, depending on how many people they bring out that night, that's usually a fourteen-piece band. They're huge, and they're absolutely wonderful. And it's, uh, like it says, horn-driven R and B. August fifth is the final movie night, and as I mentioned, the twelfth and thirteenth is the Theater in the Park. We're here before you just to ask for the issuance of a sound permit. We have not done this in the past, because we pretty much believe that the sound dies off by the perimeter of the park, but it, this is more of a, a matter of communication, and just in case anyone had any concerns.
That's good.
Notification, and working together between, uh, different, uh, taxing bodies. Any questions?
Sounds like a great program. It's gonna be good.
Great. Hope to see you there.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Next item, Cruisin' Nights, two thousand and eleven. Board to consider approving the following requests from the Westmont Special Events Corporation for the two thousand and eleven Cruisin' Nights event. Uh, geographic description for Cruisin' Nights with parking restrictions as follows. A, restrict parking on Cass Avenue from Burlington Avenue to Norfolk Street to accommodate classic car parking only from five-thirty PM to nine PM on each night of the event. B, restrict parking in the Cass and Irving parking lot next to Toons to accommodate classic car parking only from five-thirty to nine PM on each night of the event. C, permission to close Irving Street from Cass to the alleys east and west of Cass from five-thirty to nine PM on each night. D, permission to close the public parking lot at Burlington and Cass for squad car night on June twenty-third and fire truck night on July twenty-first for participating vehicles from five-thirty to nine. And finally, permit for live music and/or DJ during all nights of the event from six to nine fifteen PM. Questions? Yes?
Hello, um, first of all, I want to just say thanks to the mayor, the trustees, and everybody here who makes Westmont great. Uh, my name's Greg Kyles, and I'm the chairman for our Cruisin' Nights committee. Uh, I'm also a volunteer on the Special, uh, Events Corporation, help out with The Taste of Westmont. And I've been a resident here for about four years. My wife was actually born and raised here, so, um, you can take that for what it is. But, um, summer is quickly coming upon us, so we have been working pretty diligently in terms of putting together the plans for our Cruisin' Nights events for, um, two thousand and eleven. And just as a quick recap for two thousand and ten, um, I saw most of you out there last year, at least at some point during the summer, but, uh, we had a really great year. Um, we averaged about sixty to seventy cars per week. Um, some of the highlights included our squad car night, where we had about a hundred and fifty cars. That was actually our biggest Cruisin' Nights that we've ever had, I think, in five, six years. Um, the fire truck night and military, I always throw the military on there as well, was also a big hit with the, uh, the kids. And, uh, our motorcycle night had pretty good participation as well. So, um, we're looking forward to another great, um, year this year. One of the other things I really noticed last year, being a resident the last couple of years in Westmont, I just noticed it seemed like there was a lot more foot traffic last year, um, for our Cruisin' Nights events on Thursdays. Part of that could have been just, we were blessed with good weather for most of the weeks. But that, in the end, is really what the goal of Cruisin' Nights is, is to kind of generate that foot traffic, highlight some of the best things that Westmont has to offer, and you can really give neighbors and friends kind of the chance to kind of get out and, uh, and meet around a little bit. So, um, that was last year. Like I said, here's kind of our outline for, um, two thousand and eleven. Not a lot of change to the schedule. Um, for those of you that haven't been there, um, our Cruisin' Nights are held every Thursday night, um, from June until August, um, six to nine PM. We generally start shutting the streets down around five-thirty or so. But we hold them every Thursday in the summertime, with the exception of the Taste of Westmont weekend. Um, so these are kind of the, a quick overview of the events that we have this year. Um, as I mentioned before, our big highlights are the squad car night, our fire truck military night, and the motorcycle night. So if you look at the schedule, we really got a big event just about every month. Um, we start with squad cars in June. Um, we got the motorcycle night in August, which is right around Sturgis time, for those of the bikers out there. Um, so it kind of fits in really nice there. And, uh, the fire military truck night there in July. So, this is a quick overview of the, um, the different theme nights that we're gonna have. We're also planning on having live bands each week. Um, most weeks, those will be set up at the Nights at Columbus. Nights have been very good to us in the past. Um, I think the, the attendees of Cruisin' Nights actually enjoy having it there. Um, there's a couple other nights where we're working out some arrangements with Flemings, and they'll be providing some, uh, some entertainment there as well. Um, in addition, we're also looking to kind of improve and generate some more foot traffic for next year. Um, one of those being children's activities. Um, we're looking at a couple of different ideas right now to really get the kids more involved. Um, that was one of the aspects in getting the feedback from our spectators last year. Um, it was amazing, the ideas that came out of, um, from some of our citizens of Westmont, just in some of the things that we could do to, you know, make it a little bit more enjoyable for the kids. So we're definitely looking to incorporate those into our events for next year. And, uh, one of the other things we're gonna look to do is get our military recruiters around here a little bit more involved for Military Night, to kind of complement the fire trucks. Um, I've talked to a couple of them, and, you know, they got the world at their disposal in terms of some toys and cool things that they can kind of bring out. So we're looking to get some, some more involvement, uh, from them this year. Just quickly, in terms of the layout, there's not a lot of changes from last year, just two little ones that I certainly wanted to address. Um, the first one was, well, let me back up here and just give you a little background. At sixty to seventy cars with the way the layout is set right now, that's just about full. Seventy to seventy-five cars is, um, where it sits. We, we, we stopped the parking south of the crosswalk on Cass, and then it basically went all the way up to, uh, was it Irving or Norfolk? And we had parking on the east side of Norfolk, or I'm sorry, west side of Norfolk. Uh, and we had some overflow parking in Bank of America and the Methodist Church. So this year, we're looking to expand to the east side of Irving.
Irving.
Irving, I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier. So we want to open up the east side of Irving on Cass, and then we also want to extend the parking south of the crosswalk on Cass. Uh, we don't want to put anybody in the Burlington lot, with the exception of squad car and fire truck night, um, but we definitely want to kind of open, because we thought it caused a little bit of confusion there with some of the car owners last year. We've talked to basically all the businesses down there. Um, we will be reserving certain spots for, like Vincitore's, um, Amber, Flemings, in terms of va, having valet parking available for them. We've already talked to each of those establishments in order to make sure that, you know, their customers are satisfied with that. But in terms of growth of the event, you know, I'd rather grow it heading south towards the train tracks where everybody can see it, as opposed to growing it north up to Chicago, where you're kind of going away from downtown and a lot of the traffic. So, those are the only two changes with regards to the layout, um, in terms of this year, but everything else is pretty much the same as it kind of was, um, last year. Our goal kind of for, you know, I'd love to have over a hundred cars every week out there. That's kind of, you know, based on where we were at last year and the feedback that I got from a lot of the participants, I think it's easy that, you know, we can manage to get a hundred cars up there every Thursday night. So, you know, I'll just close by saying, again, as a resident of Westmont for the last four years, I absolutely love having Cruisin' Nights out there. Um, I think it's a great, again, opportunity for family, friends. Get the kids out, the weather is gorgeous, and, uh, you know, I look forward to your guys' support and hopefully seeing you down there next year.
Got it.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. Um, you guys work really, really hard to do this, and you do a good job of it. And, um, last year, especially Squad Car Night, there was a certain person that refused to move his new model white SUV. And I swore if he did it again this year, I'd out him at a board meeting. But what I would like, because, you know, it stood out like a red T-shirt at a wedding. And so, I would like the ordinance, when it says restrict parking, that if somebody pulls this stunt again, when these guys work so hard to get everybody in the right place and to present it the way they do, for somebody to stand there and go, "I'm not moving my car, har, hearty, har, har," that we can tow him. Because it was really rude last year, and I know that, especially during Squad Car Night, it was inappropriate. So that's my only request, is that so that they can do what they need to do when the ordinance says restricted, it includes the right to tow somebody that doesn't belong there.
I missed the episode last year. Was it a classic car park that you were trying to move, or was it just somebody that was parked down?
Oh, no. It was just somebody who insisted on parking there despite repeated requests that he move it. He thought it was cute to leave it, right in the middle of how all the squad cars were arranged.
Right.
So, I don't, I don't want somebody to do that to you, or it, it detracted from a lot of things, and it was just a pimpie thing to do.
Yeah.
So, that's what I'd like, is the ability to tow.
Can we do that?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, you know, you'd have the authority to ticket or tow, as long as you approve it by ordinance.
Should that be on the sign? When they put their little sign up saying restricted area? You might be towed?
No, I've seen before, um, signs that say, uh, no, no parking or restricted parking, police, by police order or temporary police order. So it's under the authority of, of the police department. I, I don't know what, what the signs say here, I forget.
Yeah, I don't think they say.
It says classic car parking only.
Yeah.
I know Tom's down there every week too, so...
I, I remember there was no parking police orders, and, and for the incident with Squad Car Night, we were there, coordinated off, um, you know, police parking only. Uh, the Situation Trustees, Emery's asked, we asked, the same vehicle I'm thinking of, we asked the owner twice to move the vehicle, and got reassurances, it'll be out there in a half hour. And then when we went back, tried again to move it, he did not answer the door, and answered the phone, and left his car there. We tried to, uh, for Squad Car Night at least, get ahold of the person, and we, with this case too, before we tow someone's car, we're gonna try to identify them, contact them, and say, "Hey, you've got ten, fifteen, twenty minutes, half hour, get your car out, or else we'll be towed and cited." But I think ours is no parking police orders. Um, for Cruisin' Nights, I think it's just been, you know, classic car parking only and/or, um, squad car parking only after five PM, that they're temporary signs. But that's how I would envision doing this, is that we would notify the owner, seek compliance first before we go, when it's not gonna come up and tow someone's car.
I understand that, there was deliberate non-compliance.
Yes, I, I tend to agree with you.
Just for everyone's knowledge, our police chief has a, a classic car in his garage, I've noticed.
Yes, sir, he does.
That hasn't been operated for a few years, but...
I think I saw it.
When is that car gonna come out and become part of the show?
You wanna help me pay for a battery? I'll be more than that. That's why it hasn't run.
Supply free parts?
Yeah, the battery, the battery needs a new battery, and, um...
We might be able to work on that with more sponsorship deals this year.
You will see it this year. Mayor, you will see it out this year. It's a Pontiac...
Sure it's not part of the vehicle replacement program?
No. It's, it's a seventy-eight Pontiac Trans Am that, uh, is, uh, a limited edition, so. Uh, if you bring, you bring the Corvette out, I'll bring the Trans Am out.
That's a deal. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
The only, uh, comment I had, a resident asked me about Import Night.
Import Night?
Yeah. They said...
We, it's funny, uh, and I don't want to go off too much on a tangent on that, but, um, in terms of sponsorships and getting the Westmont Auto Group or whatever group that, I have thought about that, and ways to get them more involved in turn, I mean, Westmont's known for auto dealerships, Bentley's, Lamborghini, and blows my mind why we can't have the best Cruisin' Nights out of any city around here. One way is to get them involved. Why they don't, you know, I mean, we're, we're looking for options, ideas. Um, Cass is a very narrow street, number one, um, to be parking three-hundred-thousand-dollar cars on there.
Good point.
The train tracks are very rough. I don't want to get into, you know, streets and sanitation, but, you know, the train tracks are also very rough, and, you know, I've heard that from some of our other classic car, you know, it's just rough when you got a car like that. I'm not throwing, I'm just kind of, you know, some of the obstacles that we go, but you're absolutely one-hundred percent on the mark. Mark, no pun intended. That, I would love to figure out a way to get them more, and specifically, um, you That I would love to figure out a way to get them more, and specifically, um, you know, spitballing in terms of Amber, you know, and getting the Burlington lot, you know, in terms of the clientele that Amber has and import car, you know, I, I think it's a round peg and a round hole. Um, it's just a matter of making that happen, but that is certainly one idea avenue, whatever you want to call it, that we are looking to explore.
Well, why don't you, why don't, why don't you go forward and talk to them? You have two nights that you have that lot set aside right now. Maybe come up with one night during this year, even though it's not on your brochure, but pick another night in, on the Thursday nights, close that lot off, go talk to the auto group up on, and say, "Look, we're gonna shut this lot down, bring your vehicles down, that way there's not gonna be any traffic through there."
I don't know if that's...
And, that way, I mean, I, I understand, I understand their concern.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's, it's a number of things, but I think if it's more of an area that it's quadrant off, and, you know, some of them may have a point, the cars may be there on display, but people may not be able to get real close to them.
Uh, yeah, and I, and I'm right there with you, Lee. Like I said, I've, I've tried to view it through, uh, the Burlington lot is the, you know, the one thing that everybody's got a opinion on when it comes to Cruising Nights and everything. And I've tried to view it in terms of a solution in that, in that regards, um, but I think you're absolutely right. If we could figure out a way to, you know, open up that lot, talk to the auto dealerships out there and say, "Listen, you know, we got a cornered off area, you're not gonna have to worry about cars going up and, and everything. It's just a matter of getting all the, uh, the right parties together and making it happen."
I don't want to be Johnny, Johnny Rink cloud here, but I hate to say it, but bicycles and, and, um, strollers and hundred-thousand-dollar cars don't match.
No.
Yeah.
Having been, my car scratched there, I'm just telling you, it's just the, the owners, and that's why you won't see them come up there.
And I certainly have empathy, you know, in terms of the nice cars and, you know, like I said, there are, you know, things that you gotta think, it's not like you can just go parking on the side of the street and go, but it's, eh, it's a, it's an incredibly neat idea, it's something that I've thought about many times in the past, because like I said, you know, in terms of what's Westmont known for, car dealerships certainly comes to, you know...
I think if you could make a section for them and then say, "You gotta walk in to go see 'em."
Yep.
And everything else has got to stay out.
They're cordoned off.
Yeah, cordoned off.
They gotta be cordoned off, because they won't allow, they won't allow people to get that close, even with, you know, belt buckles and all that.
And now that we got a little bit more of a concentrated marketing effort on their part in terms of the Village and everything, I think that'll facilitate that a little bit easier in the future. Um, so, yeah, we're definitely looking at it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
And we have Rich Jones here tonight, who really started Cruising Nights. Yep, it's come a long way, Rich. Thanks for starting it.
Thank you. Next item, two thousand and eleven Taste of Westmont. Board, to consider approval of the following request from the Westmont Special Events Corporation. For the two thousand and ten Taste of, should be two thousand and eleven Taste of Westmont to be held July seven, eight, nine, and ten, two thousand and eleven.
Yes.
A Carnival amusement fee waiver, B liquor license fee waiver for two locations, sound live entertainment requests for July seven, eight, nine, and ten during event hours, street closures for the event as outlined, temporary one-way traffic plan, geographic description and related issues, uh, safety cones, barriers at alleys on Irving west of Cass, permission to use, uh, traffic safety devices to ensure safe crossing of pedestrians from the Taste of Westmont event on Irving to the Methodist Parking Lot at the corner of Lincoln and Irving. This would be needed if the Carnival were to be staged in this area. And I know, I did, uh, receive a couple of concerns from residents last year, that their kids were, they were afraid that their kids were gonna hit by a car while they were crossing the alley trying to get over to the, to the ride, so as, as long as you can ensure that that's gonna be, uh, handled appropriately.
Well, we'll address that in our presentation, so thank you.
Please.
My, my name's Larry McIntyre, and we're all here on behalf of Westmont Special Events Corporation, and, uh, several of us are gonna be taking different portions of the presentation, but Taste of Westmont is three and a half months away. Uh, planning for this event occurs all year long. In fact, as soon as the event is over, we start thinking about what happened that past weekend, changes we can make. Uh, we reach out to many people, residents, businesses, and our volunteers, and solicit feedback nonstop, and we try to incorporate that feedback into, you know, changes that we can make reasonably, uh, to improve the event each and every year. Uh, so, we're gonna start our presentation with Linda Savatka, who's been a volunteer with us for many, many years. In fact, Linda is up for, uh, Citizen of the Year this year, uh, with a, the Westmont Awards Banquet that's coming up. But anyway, Linda's gonna talk about a couple of aspects, and then we'll turn over to Bob Mackert, and then I'll conclude everything, so...
Good evening, everyone. Um, the Carnival will be run, just like in the past, starting with Kids of Palooza on Thursday, July seventh, from six to ten, with unlimited rides, wristbands sold at discounted prices, um, only that night. And then Friday will start from four to eleven with just tickets and no wristbands. Saturday and Sunday, there'll be wristbands from twelve to four, and also prices for individual rides will cost between two and four dollars. You can purchase the discounted wristband starting June first at the Westmont Park District, Westmont Center, um, Special Events Office, the Jewel on Castin Ag- Cass in Agden, and Oxford Bank on Caston Sixty-Fifth Street. We've contacted the neighbors, and everyone is in agreement with our plans, um, that we're gonna present tonight. Um, we have one new ride tonight, and that is, um, this year, and it's, um, a swinging boat that is gonna be on Irving, and it's a quiet ride, but it's a swinging boat that the kids really enjoy. Hope to see everyone at the Taste, um, for the Carnival. Then I will talk about, um, entertainment, and what our entertainment will be this year. Um, first, um, Friday night, the main stage entertainment from five-thirty to seven, libido funk cir- circus. Seven to eight is the dance contest. Eight to nine is rock candy set one. Nine to nine-thirty is the dance contest during intermission. Nine-thirty to ten-thirty is rock candy set two. Saturday, which is July ninth, um, one to five in the afternoon is dance, um, studio performances. Five to five-thirty, fifteen minutes of fame contest. Five-thirty to seven, country music band or DJ with line dancing. Seven to eight, a dance contest. Eight to nine is Motown Soul Dance Tribute Set One. Nine to nine-thirty is a dance contest plus a special guest appearance. Nine-thirty to ten-thirty is Motown Soul Dance Tribute Set Two. Then Sunday, um, is twelve to two is dance studio performances, two to five Muddy Waters, open mic blues jam. Five-thirty to six-thirty is the Battle of the Bands winner performance, and then seven to nine is blues band headliners. Um, Chicago's Best Blues Guitarists and Blues Divas. I'd like to introduce Bob, who will tell you the rest.
Thank you, Linda. Hello, everyone. How are you? Um, I'm here to kind of go over the, uh, the layout this year for the Taste. There's not many changes, so I'll kind of go quickly through it. At any point, if you feel, you, you have a question, feel free to speak up and as we, as, you know, say anything you'd like to say. Um, I don't know if everybody can see that pretty well. That's actually the layout of, from, um, basically from Manning School Parking Lot up to, uh, Naperville Road, so we'll kind of start at the top of Naperville Road and kind of come south. Uh, but the main stage area, same as last year. Last year, we pushed it almost all the way up to, uh, Nap- Naperville Road over there. This year, we'll have, uh, the beer tent again as well, um, but we'll probably move it a little closer to Cass Avenue. It was a little part of the, move it, you know, it was a little far back in the lot, we felt. Um, also approve the lighting back there a little bit. Um, and then, and of course, then this will be the viewing area for the general public. And let me go to the next slide here. And this is from the, basically Manning School Parking Lot down to, uh, Norfolk here. Um, again, our traditional beer area up here in the corner, uh, the food vendors, um, will be along the same ways it's always been the past years. Uh, the Auto Mile Group, we're thinking about putting in right next to the dining tent up here in the Manning School Parking Lot. Um, also, we're gonna move the information tent kind of off where it used to be on Norfolk, more towards, uh, it, actually on Cass Avenue, adjacent to the food, as well, as well as the, as the pop tent as well with it. Considering moving Bingo to Norfolk on, basically on the west side, and then Bean Bags on the, uh, east side. Um, but we, we've had some talk about maybe flip-flopping those, depending upon how, you know, the layout kind of, how things kind of configure and move forward. Any questions so far? I'm sorry. All right. Um, and here we're looking at from Norfolk, basically to Irving. Again, coming from the north to the south, we have the craft tent again this year, um, like we had last year, the commercial vendors will be in the same spot. The U stage that we had last year with the first aid, um, in the same spot as well. Carnival will be taken up again on, uh, Norfolk there, and as Linda pointed out, with, like to, I'm sorry, Irving. And, uh, as Linda pointed out, we wanted to actually have a, um, if you can see that right there or not, the, uh, new ride over in this section of Irving that we didn't have before. And then moving on to the final area here on Cass Avenue, going from, uh, Irving to the Burlington, uh, basically all Carnival. Well, although what's gonna be new this year is a petting zoo, only on Sundays, only on, on the Sunday of the Taste, that we're gonna have a petting zoo for a few hours, and we like to use the Burlington and Cass lot right at that five corner. And that's it. Any questions about this year's layout? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. I'd like to just highlight some of the changes. Um, one of the things that Bob had mentioned, there's an area that's currently being designated for the Westmont Auto Mile, Bingo, Craft Tent, and what's the other one right there? There's about four different items, and they're all gonna be somewhat interchangeable depending on when we get closer and what the logistics dictate. Also, uh, a lot of, um, our layout is dependent on property agreements with private, uh, property owners, so, uh, we have most of those agreements in place, but, uh, for instance, let's say, uh, we end up not getting a property agreement with, um, Brickyard, and that's where we have our second beer tent. Then we, within the Special Events Permit Request Form, uh, we ask for the flexibility to then make adjustments, and that adjustment would be to move that second beer tent back to Norfolk, which is the original location for about the first ten years of the Tastes, where the, that's where the beer tent was. The Cass Burlington Parking Lot, uh, that is open to, it really business parking, two-thirds of it is designated for business parking, the south one-third is for general parking, and we are able to do that only contingent on the fact that we are able to use the Methodist Lot. And we do have an agreement in place with them, but once again, uh, we would like the flexibility that if, for some reason, that ended up not working out, obviously those Carnival rides have to go someplace, and they just return back to that original location. The petting zoo, just the south one-third of that parking lot, only on Sunday, uh, that has been discussed at a DWBA meeting. Uh, at that time, we're looking at a timeframe from noon to four. After talking with Bethel Church, which is, uh, intending to be the sponsor of that petting zoo, uh, they were hoping to extend those hours, so we'll, we'll be talking to the chamber in the DWBA to see if that can extend till six PM, but that, that would be for a Sunday only. Um, to answer the mayor's question, we are gonna, I think the plan is gonna be, is we're gonna actually put a tent, uh, right there by the alley, and the EMA will be in there. We had a little bit of a staffing situation for a couple of shifts, that won't happen this year. We'll make sure someone's there at all times, and much more, um, aggressive, I suppose, in terms of being in the middle of that alley along with some safety cones, which will provide a visual, uh, mechanism for people to slow down when they're going through those alleys, because obviously, we want to make sure it's very safe for kids in particular, but just all pedestrians crossing right there. Um, is, are there any other changes that are highlighted? I, I think that's the majority of everything, I might be forgetting something, but it's very comprehensively listed in the Special Events Permit Request Form, if there's any additional questions.
You're gonna set that tent up right in the alley?
No.
No, it'll actually be on Irving Street. My, my, my thought is that that tent, it'll be a ten-by-ten, and it'll be on Irving, um, so it won't be in the alley, it won't block any egress, but that way, uh, the EMA person can be right there. It's also to provide shade for the EMA person, because they were kind of abused out in the sun all day. So, it's to provide, uh, a little bit of a visual distraction, but that's just where they'll be, you know, held up to do their job.
Great. Okay. Any other questions, board members?
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. We'll all be looking forward to the two thousand and eleven Taste, and the hundreds of volunteers that will be making it all possible. Thank you, all of you, for coming in, uh, this evening. Next item, Automated Traffic Law Enforcement System. Board, we hear a presentation by the Westmont Police Department to provide a six-month review on the Automated Traffic Enforcement Program. Tom?
Evening, Mayor, and Village Board. I have with me also Deputy Chief Gunther, but, um, who will also oversee the current red light photo enforcement program. Administrative Sergeant Brian Bruin's here, uh, in case we have any questions, uh, afterwards. Uh, every six months, the Village is reviews the, uh, photo enforcement, red light photo enforcement program. Um, we are seven months, um, one month a little bit delayed, but the information still will be over a six-month review. The following statistics are based on activity, the only intersection we have red light cameras, and that's at Naperville and Cass. Our program started March second of two thousand and nine, and the information which we're reviewing here today, um, ends on February twenty-eighth of this year. Our officers view ten thousand five hundred and five suspected violations. Of those, only twenty-seven percent, or two thousand eight hundred and seven, were approved. Again, we're consistent, and that seventy-three percent of those suspected violations were not approved or were denied. In other words, seven thousand six hundred and ninety-three violations were approved. So, it's clear that we are rejecting or disapproving more than we are approving. Ten thousand four hundred and thirty-three violations, or ninety-nine point three-one percent, were right turn on red actions, that's the most common action seen by our two approaches. Forty-four violations, or zero point four-two percent, were straight-through violations. Only twenty-eight, or zero point two-seven percent of all the violations were those turning left. Our officers spent, it's hard to read here, two hundred and thirty-seven hours and ten minutes reviewing all videos. Officers averaged one-third, one minute and thirty-six seconds to view a video and make a determination before going on to the next. All videos are reviewed by on-duty personnel, no overtime was involved in the reviewing of the potential violations. As was described, a high level of discretion is used when viewing, uh, suspected violations. This was something that we put in place at the beginning of the program and continue through today. Again, we reject more suspected violations than we approve. As usual, as you can see here, hopefully, a picture's worth a thousand words.
Is that the white car that was parked at, uh, prison? What? Blackest car. Jesus. Yeah. Red light, red light, oh, red light.
That was at two o'clock in the afternoon.
Gosh, I still...
And three o'clock in the morning. That one, uh, I was playing it afterwards.
Was that a double hit?
No.
Someone was in my eyes. It's crazy. It was crazy.
You know, there on the right-hand corner was a bicyclist, he had to move his bike back because the car failed to come to a stop before he proceeded across the intersection. It's one of my favorites.
Jesus.
I'm getting a bicyclist in the area.
Oh, really? Oh, I'll just turn left on red. Nobody's coming. Oh, God. It's like it's the same little black car. That was right after thirty-six inches of snow. Clear the streets. No signal either. Crazy.
It's two o'clock in the morning. So, that's the end of the photo presentation. So, as you can see, um, these violations are all violations that, um, have occurred in the last six months. Uh, when Sergeant Bruin puts this compilation together, he takes only those within the last six-month time period. You're not seeing something that occurred at the beginning of the program. These are all current, um, violations. On revenue from August first, two thousand and ten, through February twenty-eighth, uh, the end of this period, uh, two thousand and eleven, the Village has received thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars, yeah, I'm sorry, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifteen cents in fines. Observing, having PowerPoint problems here. Uh, approximate costs associated with the administration of this program in that same period were four thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars eighty-nine cents. Those costs include, uh, the officer's time, uh, to review the violations, the clerk's time, or a records clerk's time, uh, to attend the hearings here, as well...
period were $4,676.89. Those costs include, uh, the officer's time, uh, to review the violations, the clerk's time, or a records clerk's time, uh, to attend the hearings here, as well as our cost for the adjudicator to, uh, conduct the hearings. Our approximate cost associated with the program again was $4,676. After cost, the villages realized $8,649.26 from the program over the past seven months. Since the inception of this program, the villages received $86,472.88. Costs associated with the administration of program through February are $18,341.1. After cost, the villages realized $68,131.87. Um, I'm sorry that slide's been cut off, but, um, it goes to show that the program is self-sustaining. Um, all the costs, uh, associated with this program are realized by the, uh, fines that we're receiving. There's an outstanding amount of $13,200 due because of late or unpaid violations. These are the $100 violations. There were 132 violations which remained unpaid. Um, what happens is, is they probably were paid the next month, just at that month back in February or January, they just didn't pay their fines or weren't collected. Accident data, review of accidents using data from 2008, 2009, and 2010, there were a total of six accidents at that intersection for, in each of the three years. There were six accidents each. Again, I'm sorry, I apologize, it's cut off. Number of accidents in the same direction as the red light cameras, in 2008, there were four, 2009, there were four, and 2010, there were two. There is no indication that the accidents occurred as a result of the presence of the cameras. Since the installation of the red light photo enforcement, we are unaware of any accidents at that intersection where cameras played any role in the cause of the accident or caused any driver to overreact due to the camera's presence. One of the, um, issues you'll hear from people is, is that because there's signs indicating there's a red light photo enforcement, people tend to step on the brakes, people tend to stop shortly. Uh, that may occur, but it's not resulting in any accidents. Uh, it was also brought up to me too, uh, just to digress one second, is on a, on a right-hand turn on red, does someone have to turn if they don't want to? No, they do not. That's an optional, uh, that's a driver's option. You don't have to turn if you don't want to. Since the beginning of our program, we've seen a reduction in number of our violations. In 2009, we issued a total of 1,583, uh, violations. In 2010, that total has dropped to 1,030 violations for the year. A reduction in the amount of suspected and approved violations is an indicator that the enforcement program is effective in changing drivers' habits, as is the reduction of accidents. The, the total accidents at that intersection still remains at six, from last year's data. However, in the approaches that they're called, in the direction the cameras are monitoring, traffic accidents have actually dropped. The future of our red light photo enforcement in Westmont, based on the information collected during surveys conducted during 2010, the amount of violations observed at Cass and Ogden Avenue is where we had intended in installing cameras, does not justify installation of a red, uh, red light camera. The state has also done at our second request to install photo enforcement cameras at the off-ramp in southbound Illinois Road at E3 at Ogden Avenue. We don't intend to reapply for a third time, even though red speed has suggested we do so. The state's turned us down twice, I feel that, you know, um, a third time is just not gonna be advantageous. However, recently, we have learned from the DuPage Mayors and Managers Association that the DuPage County Board is recent, is reconsidering allowing red light cameras at county intersections. This has been a common question, and Trustee Scott has asked the status of this all the time. We understand now with the new board, new board president, that they are now going to move forward with, uh, looking at this issue. So along those lines, staff is preparing a, a process of inviting our county representatives to meet with us, review our program, and answer any questions they may have, so they're familiar with our operation, where we want to put the cameras, what county intersections we'd like to install at, and also give them our input as to how they should regulate that, or how they should, uh, set their fees for that program. We will keep the Village Board updated on our progress and developments involving, um, the county board's progress, and at that time, uh, we stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Um, at this point, though, to make sure the residents understand, you're not ticketing anybody because they have to stop over the line. It's only those who make the turn without stopping or go through the light totally.
We never have. Um, it's always been, as you saw in the violations, if you fail to stop, um, our most common complaint is, is that, um, I didn't know I could not make a right-hand turn on red at that intersection, uh, that's why I got the ticket, when actually it was because they failed to stop. No, um, and I believe the state law was changed recently as well to, to allow that if you stop past the white line, you, you know, just as long as, um, that's not taken into effect. Our officers never have, that's one of the restrictions that I put in place, and they never will, just as long as a person, if they come to a stop five feet, 10 feet, just prior before entering the intersection, and they come to a complete stop before turning right on, on the red light, they will not receive a citation.
Any other questions? Very good. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item, Contract for Comprehensive Plan Consulting Services. Houseal Levine. Board to consider a contract for consulting services with the firm of Houseal Levine to create a new comprehensive plan for the village of Westmont.
Fred, your honor, our apologies. Devin Levine with the Houseal Levine was here earlier tonight. Uh, he did receive a text message a short while ago from his wife, who has MS, who is experiencing some medical difficulties, and he needed to leave to attend to her medical needs. I assured him that the board would be understanding of that, that type of a, an emergency situation, so he does send his regrets that he, he was here earlier in attendance and had, had to leave the meeting. So if the board is comfortable with that, I think the village manager and I, Shannon, and perhaps the village attorney would be prepared to respond to any questions that you may have. We have done a, a series of reviews of the, uh, proposed contract for consulting services for the rewrite of our comprehensive plan. We're comfortable with what is being recommended now, and Mr. Houseal and Mr. Levine have agreed to all the changes that were incorporated in John Zemunak's latest version of that document, including the redlined text amendments.
Might he be available on Monday evening?
That, that's certainly possible, your honor, if, if the board would like to have him, uh, and he even offered to call his partner, who's 45 minutes away, and have him drive here immediately. We said, well, we, we certainly understand the nature of the medical emergency, but if the board would feel more comfortable in having a representative here on Monday evening, we would certainly see to that.
Okay.
And if, if we need him. I, I can't see him coming all the way out if we don't need him either.
I'm fine if staff is comfortable and everything I read looked good.
Yeah, and John's been through it all, so.
But I think, uh, John, you had the, the last crack at it after we incorporated some changes, he, he kinda put some of that legal ease in the red text in there, and I think that kinda finished it off, and I think we're, staff is, is certainly comfortable with the, uh, the finished product that you have before you, unless the board has any other proposed changes or questions at this time.
No. As long as you're comfortable with it.
Yep.
And we're getting what we want.
And it, it was real tough dealing with these guys, you know, we suggested some changes, and they said, sure, every community has their own way of approaching these things, and those changes are all fine, so. If that's any indication of our working relationship, we look forward to working with them.
Yeah, I don't think he needs to come out on Monday.
No.
Also, hell, that they put together a pretty comprehensive contract to begin with, that they presented to the village, that was, you know, fairly neutral in, in the way it was drafted. It wasn't a one-sided contract that I looked at and said, oh my God, we have to change a lot, so.
Any other comments? Thanks, Fred. Next item, Appropriations Amendment. Board to consider an ordinance amending appropriations for corporate purposes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2011, to account for debt payment.
Good evening. You have before you this evening this amendment to the appropriation ordinance, and it's basically just to be in conformance with the accounting standards. In governmental accounting, any payment of debt principal is counted as an expenditure. Because of that, it's subject to the appropriations ordinance. Now, the village has authorized refinancing a loan, which saves the taxpayers a whole bunch of interest, and therefore, we have to increase our appropriations ordinance. It's a little counterintuitive, but that's the requirement that would be there for that refinancing of the loan. Similarly, the library also has paid off some principal on their loan early, again, to save on interest costs. So, that's basically what it is. Any questions?
You made it very clear. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Spencer. Moving right along, Finance Ordinance, number 23.
Waive the reading. Waive the reading.
Quest to waive the reading.
Yes.
Purchase orders. Any questions on purchase orders? There are no comments on purchase orders. Moving right along. Unless there's something else to come before the board at this time?
Nope. Boo, we thought he needed more podium time.
I'm getting my stuff.
I would, uh, like to request an executive session regarding personnel and potential litigation.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second, roll call.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Trustee Clevanell.
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned to executive session. Thank you.